Call the meeting.
This meeting is being recorded.
The Board of Selectmen is present with several guests. Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
The item three in the agenda is here from the public. Any public to be heard? Mr. Branch, I see you on there. Anything you wanted to comment on?
I was just gonna come up during here from boards and commissions on behalf of the ag commission.
All right, very good. Going to item four, Board of Selectmen for Selectmen Updates. First of all, I'd like to extend our sincere congratulations to Katie, who had a healthy baby boy. And I understand mom and baby are home and doing very well. Second item, we had a bit of a glitch. I know I reported to you last week that the Barlow Mill Bridge had been completed and it has been and is operating. The only thing yet to be done is to formalize some guardrails and that's going to be done in the spring. But the glitch that came up with, I had a meeting last Friday with the first selectman and our highway foreman and their highway foreman. And it turns out that bridge is not in Eastford. It's not on the Eastford Ashford line. Their town planner had called that to their attention and we did some research with their town clerk and went through a bunch of maps. And that section just before the the break on the on the border between Ashford and Eastford, up to that point, the center of the river is the demarcation on the town line. Just probably less than 50 yards before that bridge, suddenly it becomes a straight line. And the bridge is entirely in Ashford. So what I'm trying to do is is find out if we need to bring a land surveyor in. I don't think so. We have referred to the NECOD MAX, which I understand are not certified by a land surveyor. But Sherry Much has done some extensive research. We went back to town records when the town and Ashford actually split. And it seems fairly clear that that demarcation does take a change there. I don't know how the straight line got drawn, but it is.
Does that affect, does that affect the repairs that were done on the bridge? We would, we did those repairs, correct?
We did. Eastford did help us with their trucking and I believe they brought in some gravel.
Oh, okay.
We've all been of the understanding that entire stretch of the road belonged to both towns. But you're correct, Catherine. We spent the bulk of the money and and the bulk of the repairs. We we coordinated with deep through two of their different departments. It was our inland wetland commission, our wetlands officer. And and we coordinated with NECOD.
Okay, so the bottom line is, do we owe Eastford money?
No, no, we don't owe them money. But we shouldn't expect any money. Our bill at this point is about 39,000. And we were anticipating that we would be having half of that. Turns out that that entire amount is going to be on our bill. So, but we do not owe them any money. It's with gratitude that they helped us one day with calling in gravel and that. I think, I'm not sure if we paid for all even all the gravel, which we may have, but so anyway, it was an education for all of us and our apologies to Eastford if we try to stick them with a bill that they didn't belong to.
Were we paying with, I'm trying to remember what we were paying that with, was it ARPA money or something else?
Well, it, no, we have not put in for our money. We have, we have paid through it through our public works department.
Okay, thank you.
We are looking at grants. I also intend on appealing to Yale Forest and Hull Lumbering to see if they perhaps can, will assist us with any of those costs. It's nothing that can be proved. But over the years, their heavy lumbering trucks are probably the suspects for causing that bridge to last a little less than we were hoping it would. But that's all I have on that. I'll continue to update that, but we continue to to research whether or not we can come up with any grants or contributions from Yale or Hull Lumbering. Next item. Went to the Carol Singh last night. I don't know if either of you have the opportunity to do that. But it was a very successful. Last year, we had between 25 and 30 participants and this year we had well over 100. I extend our appreciation to the rect mission. I know they they did a lot of work. Not only last night, but feeding up to that. And our public works department did coordination with them with getting the tree trimmed and everything. It was a very nice, successful evening and we really appreciate everybody that was involved in that. I did get a bit of bad news, though. We've had an arborist look at our tree. And apparently it's got a disease that's affecting all of that type trees in the area and they're telling us we're probably going to lose that tree in possibly two or three years at the most.
Did they speak at all about the, what can be, I'm almost going to say injected into the tree? You can bore some holes in a tree and inject some stuff that does have an impact on some of the diseases that they can get?
Yeah, I got the news third hand, Catherine, but I'm definitely going to follow up on that with a with a more formal conversation on the arborists. And that's a good question. I will certainly ask.
What kind of, what kind of tree is it?
It's a type of a pine tree and I don't know the exact.
Okay. Thank you.
It looks beautiful, but and and apparently this disease affects it from the bottom up. Which I wasn't familiar with. So anyway, I'll keep everybody posted on that. I'm glad to say that Kit.
Okay.
Are we all right, Mike? I don't know.
Oh, good on my end. Yep.
Okay, I heard something about recording stop. Anyway, I'm glad to report that Kit made it through her procedure she had to go through in his home recovering. We expect her to be back to work by the 13th. Also, I don't know if you folks are aware, but Charlie Bussey was in the hospital for several days and I'm advised he's home and also recovering, expects to return to work next week. Our transfer station gate that we're repaying for through ARPA funds, the work is going to begin tomorrow. We're not sure how long it's going to take, but they're going to be pouring the footings and and starting on that. We're also going to take the gate that we're using presently in the front. I've asked Joe to make sure that the back gate on that transfer station is operable. I don't know how long the one that was is there now has been inoperable. But it's not working and I've asked him to make sure that back area during closed hours for this transfer station is locked up. I understand we have some people taking advantage of that situation. And DPW has been doing their fall cleanup. They did the entrance to Ashford Park. I think it looks very nice. They did some minimum work there in front of the wagon shed. I don't know if you folks are aware of it, but we saw no mowing going on by the state this year on any of our state roads. I called them at least three times. I know Joe called them several times. And they said it was a labor manpower problem. And three times I was told they were, they were heading this way. Apparently they got lost in between because we never saw them. We did have our own crews go through and Woodward Cemetery was a good example, but also a couple of intersections like North Road and 44 because we had sightlines being impeded. And we took the initiative and cleared those areas themselves. Asphal, Asplin is in the area. They've cut a couple of trees on Varga Road. They're on the schedule to to do the areas that they've indicated throughout town. We've also had some complaints about Horse Hill and numerous power outages. I've had, been in discussions with EverSource about that. And the feed that we have, I do have a meeting coming up with our regional director. Hopefully before the end of this week. We had one scheduled for last week, but because of the scare and some of the weather forecast, he had to cancel. And I know Luther should be happy to hear. I also emphasize, I understand Mansfield Tree started on the South Cemetery tree, dead trees that were there that have been on the schedule for two and a half years. And I'm told they'll be between them and the highway crew working on the dirt section of Varga Road. If not this week, the first part next week.
The inference being that the trees that are dangerous on there that are getting in the way of getting the debris from a tree that was taken down out of that farmer's field. That's where that's all going?
That one's going to be going. They're also going to be working. The trees originally, the highway department thought that they'd be able to handle it. But they're dangerous trees. They've got to be done from the top down.
Right, that's what you said last, at our last meeting. So that's why I'm asking.
So so they're scheduled for that. That tree that's down in Luther, Luther, you can correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that that fell in your, in that field. It wasn't dropped. Is that correct?
And that came down at the same time in July that the we were there working on. And so the crew was here getting the oak tree picked up and I spoke with Joe. And at that time he said he'd be back in a couple of weeks to pick that one up. But I, you know, and I'd sent some emails for follow up, but not, you know.
Yeah, the one that, yeah. It, we will be getting to it. I'm told it's a, it's on the priority list.
Okay, if they want to coordinate with me, I can provide access.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. I'll remind you. All right, any questions or anything on the updates?
On the one, you said you're meeting with EverSource on those power outages that are being caused by, apparently by trees and limbs?
Well, I'm going to add that to the agenda. I've been copying them on my emails with the resident from that area. So they're they're aware of it and what they're going to do is they, that the, it's area, it's designated for tree trimming and removal where needed. There, I was told last week they're going to spend, send in a special crew to take a look at the transformers and switches in that area because they're thinking it's more than a tree or trees that are causing the outages.
That's good.
All right, item five, acceptance of the minutes of November 21st.
There was something in the minutes. There was a and bear with me.
Well, there's a correction. It said 22. It's about the meeting calendar that it should have said 23.
That was one thing. There was something else in it as well. And I'm sorry, I didn't print them off to take another look at them. But there was.
Would you want to postpone? We don't have to approve.
Yeah, we can, can we postpone that one until our next meeting and I'll make sure to take a good look at it again.
All right. Do I have a motion to table that?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any other discussion hearing that all in favor, seeing if I'm saying aye, aye?
Aye, thank you.
All right, here from boards, commissions and committees. Luther, you're on.
Okay, folks, thanks. So I'm here for the ag commission. We just have a simple question. Possibly simple, possibly naively simple. There's a pretty good desire. We've had some some things that the commission wants to work on and we, the commission would like to go back to in-person meetings. Because we, the feeling is that it's easier to collaborate and all sit around a whiteboard and brainstorm and come up with a plan in person. So the question is, are we allowed to do that?
The, the answer is yes. Several of our committees are starting to meet. It's allowable through statutes now. The, the only caveat to that is that if you do have a member that is either for medical reasons or whatever requested it be on Zoom, that it be on Zoom.
And just to clarify, from, from what I saw at the FOIA meeting that was offered, which was very helpful, that can also just be achieved through a call in, is is my understanding that a board or committee, a commission member can actually just call into the meetings. We wouldn't even necessarily need Zoom. Is that accurate or is that mistaken?
I believe that the committee elects to do that, that they're allowed to do that. I can double check that.
Okay, so we're allowed to do in-person meetings and we're not compelled to offer a hybrid option so long as it's appropriately noticed and goes out on the website and it's available to the public and.
That's correct. It's, it's posted in a legal manner. We, we are trying to encourage both what we call hybrid meetings. And what we're doing is we're trying to get the large conference room downstairs as well as order another set of owl and laptop. So we could have two rooms available for committees to use the owl system, which would mean a hybrid meeting that would be taped in video.
And is it best to coordinate through, so what's the, I'm sorry, Catherine?
Bill, I was just going to ask if the owl is, you know, we use the owl for the town meetings down in the large conference room. Is there something that is precluding boards from using that in that room?
The only thing, we've got Savage working on that computer because there, that computer is either tired or slowly dying. And we've asked them to upgrade that. We could replace it with another one. I've asked them to give me prices on buying another owl plus two other laptops.
Right, but it's the laptop you're saying is an issue right now. Is that correct?
That's, that's my understanding.
The owl is not.
The owl is not. The owl is working fine.
All right, so do we, are we, do we have a laptop on order?
I've asked them to give me a price on, on a new owl and also laptops. And that was the end of last week. I've not heard yet, but I'll follow up with them.
So the only thing I wanted to make mention of with Mr. Brauch is that, Brock, I'm sorry, the if we have an owl available and the room is available. What it does do is, yes, your board can be up there and they can be going through whatever. And I'm not sure what kind of paperwork that your members receive ahead of a meeting. But when someone does call in, all they have is what's sitting in front of them. They don't, you know, have the opportunity to see everybody. They don't have the opportunity, if there was anything being shown around the table that they hadn't already received, they don't have that to work from. And we have seen what that can be like for some people who've called into meetings in the past. And the other thing too is if the owl is working and the room is available and the instructions are fairly simple, at least having a hybrid meeting with anybody, you know, who dial in whoever wants to, they have the opportunity, if they can't get away from their kids or whatever, to actually be able to see and hear what's going on in a meeting. Well, as we find, minutes don't always capture everything. So since all was required of the motions.
Excellent point. Yeah, if, if that technology is, is available to take advantage of, we're certainly not opposed to it. We just wanted to find out, you know, if we were allowed to go back to in person. And then also, second to that, is that something, I don't know who to coordinate that through.
So you don't know what?
Booking rooms, booking the owl, getting access to the building.
Go through, go through Chris Luther in our office. Let her know what dates you're available. I mean, if, if the large room is booked, I know that we're, we're approaching the budget periods right now and that you room gets a lot of use. We'll make.
I think our, I think our meetings are, are on the calendar at this point. The December meeting, we will likely stay virtual. Meg and I actually are in Tennessee for this next meeting, so we won't be able to do in person. But I think we'd like to go January. We'd like to start going. So I'll, I'll swing through in the next week or so and see if we can start setting that up so that we're not rushed.
Sounds good.
And also the setup, Bill, if I understand correctly, when we get that second owl, the setup for that shouldn't be all that complicated, correct? Second owl and second laptop.
I, I hope not. That's certainly.
We've already been through it before.
Yeah, that's the intent.
And the intent would be to use it. And the intent would be to use it in that small conference room or the selectmen's conference room or both?
Well, I'm primarily thinking the selectmen's conference room. But it should give us portability.
Exactly.
And I think as, as we get more of the boards, I was thinking even to have a little training session with the boards, commissions, their clerks and chairman. You know, just familiar and myself, to be honest, we familiarize ourselves with the operation of the owl.
And actually.
Mike and, and, and John have been more than cooperating and coordinating with us, but I'd like to be able to have our folks do it, do it on our own.
And if you do have a training session, I recommend that you just record it so people can actually see it when they want to and have the simple steps laid out for them in writing so they can just follow them.
My preference would have as many people attendance can, but no, I agree. We can document it. Anything else, Luther?
No, thank you all so much. I appreciate the time and we will coordinate.
Very good. Thank you. No other boards or commissions? All right, under seven old business, Ashford Advisory School Building Committee. I don't believe we have any reports from them. We are working with Cindy and, and well, we'll get on to that a little later in the agenda here, but and coordinate keeping Jim Rupert updated on whatever we're doing regarding bonding and all the other issues. Item B, Ashford School Roof Project. Act on setting of the Ashford School roof project proposal bonding amount.
Do we need a, do we need a motion in order to discuss it? Because I'd like to find out what soft costs include.
I think that would be appropriate. Then we can discuss it.
Okay, so there's a particular motion that we would use for this. Is that a resolution?
Yes, Chris, did you send that out or?
I think it's on page seven C, resolution appropriating $5 million for cost related. Is that the one?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make the motion, resolution appropriating.
The first thing you have to do is pass the amount that's in the resolution.
Okay, so there's my concern because I'm thinking that the amount might be inadequate. So depending on how we treat soft costs. So, um, it's.
Well, why don't, why don't we, if we have a second for the motion, then we can start discussing, if we have to modify. I don't think we're going to have to, but we can certainly discuss that. The amount, we can always do that.
So the motion that, wait, we don't have a motion yet. We, the motion I was talking about was a resolution. And what Chris is saying is we have to agree on the amount first as, as a, as a a vote on that first. Is that correct, Chris?
Yes, because the amount is part of the resolution that you're recommending to the board of commissioners.
So that's what's included in that resolution. So we don't, we don't need two motions. Is that correct?
Yes, you do. You need a motion to set the amount.
Yeah.
Five million or whatever else you're going to set it at, then you need another motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay. Okay, I move to for the Board of Selectmen to approve an amount of $5 million for costs for these roof replacement project at Ashford School.
Friendly amendment to that amount to include soft costs.
Okay. That's fine. We have a second?
For the purpose of discussion, I'll second.
Roger, second's it. The floor is open for discussion. As you know, I think we discussed at our, our last selectmen's meeting, the amount that we got from Mike Serrano, which I don't happen to have in front of me, but roughly it was $4 million, five and change, I believe. What we've done is we've inquired with bond counsel and, and also with with Mike Serrano and we feel that the $5 million would be able, would easily cover whatever anticipated soft costs would be involved.
Could you elaborate, just to clarify what soft costs would typically cover, what they entail?
Yeah, I was just going to do that. It would, that would be any legal fees tendered, any additional architectural of fees that may be involved. And if we decide to go ahead with the finance advisor, those costs.
Question on the finance advisor. That person to, it looked like a finance advisor would be someone who would be involved in the coming up with what the bonding should be. It didn't appear that it would be somebody who would be working on the project. But maybe you could clarify what financial advisor would be doing.
Well, I did send you there his, and I know you got it on short notice today. I did send you a scope of the work that that would be inclusive of. It wouldn't be pounding nails. It would actually be describing it, doing the long-term impact for the town on a mill rate, that sort of thing.
Wouldn't that be in advance of getting the bonding? Looking at the impact on the mill rate?
He, he would, he would be coordinating with the Board of Selectmen and our bond council for our preparation of bringing it to town meeting and referendum if that's the way we decide to go.
And the amount that, there was a, it was a hefty price tag for that financial advisor.
I did not total the, the cost. I, I sent that out to you folks as soon as I got my hands on it.
I'm just looking at it again.
I did a quick read through and I got, it was around somewhere between 20 and $40,000 at the most.
Give me just a second if you would. I looked at it and I hadn't totaled it, but I thought it was actually, could be more than that. Proposal had and this is from Monastat?
Beg your pardon?
It's from Monastat, correct?
Yes.
Mark Chapman.
Mark Chapman.
Yeah, and the amounts were you know, it was talking about the rating agencies and how they can help us get our bond rating up, that kind of thing. The thing is, if we're going for bonding, we're going with the rate that we have right now. So to me, it would be more oriented to future work. So we have general obligation bond sales. Those totaled, that totaled to 35, 41,500. And then general obligation note sales, what they. Five hundred. And then General Obligation Note Sales, what they showed was eighteen thousand. So, and then Disclosure Filings were five hundred with minimum or two hundred and fifty per outstanding bond issue and two fifty. Minimum fee for assistance in preparation, distribution of each notice of event filing concerning occurrence of an event or non-compliance with the rule. What I was, what I saw in this was. Someone who would be working with our town and finance department, but it it wouldn't be. Specific necessarily to this bonding proposal. It would be. Any kind of bonding that we were doing and they would be working with us to help us get our, our. Our. Fitch Moody's S and P ratings up.
Can I make a suggestion? Instead of guessing at what's included or what's not. The 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 dollar amount that the motion on the floor is, is for five million, we do not have to spend that much. I can bring, we could do a special meeting and ask Mr. Chapman to, to join us and perhaps even bond counsel. To let us know and go over the advantage of this. It was a recommendation from bond council. I don't believe we have to commit to that tonight. To do the dollar amount on the the general bond issue and to also do the resolution. Coordinate something with, so we are all more familiar with what's going on with the finance advisor.
Right, and I'd love to hear it directly from them. You know, because this is a, this is just kind of a, like a canned presentation. So it doesn't have a, a lot of detail in it.
I sent you what I had.
No, I know that.
All right, any more discussion on the five million dollars? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make the.
Motion pass unanimously.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion, the resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and I'll just read it for anybody who is actually, you know, calls in on this meeting or sees the recording. This resolution is to appropriate five million dollars for costs related to the roof replacement project. At the Ashford School and authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the same amount to finance the appropriation, appropriation.
Any more discussion or changes, inquiries? All in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye, aye? Unanimous, thank you very much. Moving right along here. Item D, review the twenty twenty-two steep funding procedure is recommended by the Ashford Auditors. Chris, I was of the impression Sean was gonna join us tonight?
No, on the nineteenth.
Oh, okay. I I know. You had some. Catherine, excuse me, had some questions regarding the appropriateness of a separate account in that, so. Sean will join us on the nineteenth and go over. He did send us that one letter. But I did have a discussion with him and told him I thought it might be of advantage that he. We reviewed that with the entire board.
I agree. So what we're doing is we're tabling that?
He 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 was adamant that he didn't feel it would have any impact on our. Credit rating, but I'd rather you heard that from him and his explanation than secondhand from me.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand what the funding procedure is gonna be.
No problem. So we will table item B until our next meeting. Item E, Ashford School Oil Tank Replacement Project bids, discuss and possible action on tank. Purchase. As I mentioned, I was gonna do it our last meeting. I had a meeting last Friday. With the business manager from the school, the superintendent, I invited Jane Urban, but she was unable to make it. Our treasurer sat in. I was there and we discussed the, the project in general and how it was going forward at that. And. We've decided our our recommendation is to go, and I believe you both got copies of the bids. With the John W. Kennedy Company out of Rhode Island.
That's a sixty-one, sixty-one thousand, seven twenty?
That's correct. And I did contact Amy, who's with the contractor that we've chosen to do the actual. Work. And I hadn't realized that she had not seen the bids. And I forwarded them to her first thing this morning. She did get one of, one of the concerns and the dollar amounts are in the ballpark and it would appear. That the bid proposals for the specs on the tanks are comparable. So obviously, we would go with the. Kennedy bid. The problem is Kennedy said that it would be a potential of forty to sixty weeks of delivery. And we don't have that long. And I asked Amy whether or not she would be able to. Appeal to the distributor since we got their names from her, because she thought she could do a little better. She. Sent me a subsequent email a little later in the day, said she's got one more distributor that handles that type tank. That she was gonna contact and see what their delivery dates were, because we're shooting to get this started no later. Than the last week in June, to coincide with school being dismissed. And all the work that has to be done around that, so. While the committee of Joe and myself and and Cindy. Were 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 prepared to recommend to go ahead with the purchase directly from John W. Kennedy. Company. My suggestion right now is let's hold off and see what other. Bid she can come up with and whether or not the delivery is more working within our proposed schedule.
So if I understand correctly, looking at these two bids, there's the Wildco PES company here as well. Is the only real difference between these two bids? Less than five thousand dollars?
Yes.
So what I see on the Wildco bid is delivery is six to eight months after approved drawings. So. Do we know when we would have what should be considered to be approved drawings?
I'm I'm sorry you were breaking up on me here. What was the last part of the question?
Do we have any idea when we might have approved drawings? Just, I'm just was looking at the other bid. Thinking that it's less than five thousand dollars more, that that's not chump change, but. And what they said on their delivery was it was six to eight months after approved drawings.
Yeah, as as far as I know, we have all of the drawings. I believe that we've been submitted by service. I I think the only hitch is our commitment in signing a contract.
Okay, so it sounds like what we really want, what we really want is we want this person to come back and see what she can bring back. In terms of a bid of some kind, and then we'll make a decision between the three.
Correct.
Okay.
So we will move on from that with no action until we have a little more information. F, Status of the After-School Program as proposed by the Recreation Commission. Also on Friday, the same group with the addition of Sherry York and Dave Roston. Was with us as well as the business manager from the school. We reviewed everything pretty much that we've already reviewed. What we. We all agreed at the meeting that if it could be worked out and we could afford to do it. And hire the paraprofessionals that are presently at the school. To do this program, they'd be paid for through as part-time employees with the town. There would be no, no conflict in that case with the union contract from the school. The way it was left was Cindy, and I haven't heard from her back yet. Was going to meet with the paraprofessionals and see if in fact it was an interest in pursuing it that way, so. I was honestly hoping to make a recommendation to the board tonight. On what we were gonna hope to do there, but my suggestion would be let's not take any action pending. Hearing back from Cindy, and once I do that, perhaps we'll need a special meeting. To figure out our course of action. Any questions?
So. Were there any questions asked during this meeting that was held? With all the principals or whatever you wanna call them? I had wanted, I wanted to sit in on that to hear what they were gonna say about it, so. Because it certainly, I think it was at our last meeting, that what was discussed is that it. Did not appear that the Paris were interested. Because they were gonna be working such a long day.
Well, I I think that that was one of the questions was, is there, I mean, there's twenty-four of them up there. We need two or three. I don't think it was said at the last meeting, we didn't think they would, but that was certainly one of the concerns is one of the things, and that's one of the things. That's prompting Cindy to meet with them. I wasn't aware you wanted to sit in on that meeting, Catherine. If you had, I would have called it a special selectance meeting.
Yes, actually, that's why I thought it was gonna be a kind of a working meeting with everybody. Okay. So we'll wait until we hear from the Paris, so to speak.
Yes, from from Cindy after she she meets. I I offered to meet with them, but. It is her staff and she had a preference to meet with them on her own. I certainly wouldn't have checked to that. So we won't take any action, and again, this may be the the fruit of a new special selectance meeting. Discussion regarding the Trump House planning. As you know, we discussed it last week and reviewed, roughly reviewed Bob Hurd's submittal. I had a meeting with Joan Bowley and Kay Warren today. And. They had inquiries about why we took no action or tabled any action on that and explained to them. What our thoughts were at the last meeting. What they did remind me, and quite honestly, I forgot about it, was our board. I believe it was during Ralph's last tenure, appointed Mike Gardner and. Chuck Funk on a committee with Joan Bowley to review. What Bob Burr was going to be doing and make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. I quite honestly had forgotten that. And I believe I copied you on emails today. I sent the proposal, the last report from Bob Hurd to Mike and Chuck today. And asked them if they would review and comment to the board as soon as possible for us. I have not heard back from either one of them yet, but. I would suggest we take no action until we do hear back from them and then. Give it further consideration at that time.
You were, you were saying, and you know, the rationale for, let's see, it was Chuck and who was the other one?
Say that again.
Who was the other person besides Chuck?
Mike Gardner.
So. Neither of them, you know, have been involved over the last, you know, while we were all waiting for this. And Chuck is no, you know, part of the reason that Chuck was on that committee was because he was Chair of the Board of Finance. So I'm kind of wondering if they are still the appropriate people to be working on this thing.
I I don't recall it that way, Catherine, as we're talking here. I I I recall the reason or part of the reason or rationale to choose those individuals was their. Familiarity with construction.
Uh, good point, good point.
And and you know, Mike at the time was the building inspector and obviously that's Chuck's profession. I think. We were looking for somebody that was more knowledgeable than any of us from the construct perspective of it.
I stand corrected. I agree.
All right, well, we'll move on and I'll keep you posted. Soon as I hear from them, I'll certainly share it with the board.
Yeah, the other aspect of the thing with Chuck was that he could also possibly provide a little balance when it came to looking at what the finance. Aspects of this would be.
Couldn't hurt.
The cost.
And I am still gonna, if he wants to offer that as some input, I still respect his experience from being on the board and knowing the. In and outs of town financing.
Yep.
Okay, item H, under Old Business, Ever, Ever Source Tree Trimming. I think I kind of touched on that. I didn't mean to jump the gun, but on my. First selectman briefing, is there anything else we need to go over on that? All right, item I, Camperet Lane. Road Maintenance. Catherine, did you have a chance to read? Sil Pauli?
Yeah, I did. I got, actually, I got it from. Person who heads their, the. Lake Association.
Okay, it was actually in your package last, at our last meeting.
Yeah, but I had gotten, I had just gotten it before the other guy, from the other person. So from the town's perspective, if I got it straight, we feel that we've done everything we can do there. Is that correct?
Not exactly. Has confirmed, I've had two conversations with him since then. That we have been doing all we could to a point, but he's making a recommendation in that letter. Of either forcing two residents there to install drainage pipes. Under their driveways, or we take it on ourselves and to do some regrading of the road. And to repitch a couple of the drainage stitches that we put in and perhaps add some gravel. And and Joe has agreed that we will do that as soon as weather permits us to do that. That's pretty much the extent, the extent of what the尼科s engineers recommending that we do.
So with the two residents, are we forcing them to fix their driveway or are they, are they, aren't they part of the? Association there, which would have more sway in terms of having them fix them?
My intent was to send them notice that they had to do that. My understanding at one time. And I'm I'm just getting this on second and third hand, was at least one of those pipes was installed and was removed by the owner. So I'm trying to get a little more information, but I'm gonna put them on formal notice that that needs to be done. But I don't wanna hold up the work if we need to do it and it's deteriorating work by them not doing it. We'll have to put them on some sort of legal notice and get that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. So I'm good with that.
Go ahead, Catherine, sorry.
Okay, so it it sounds like we're doing the things you just mentioned. And and that basically fulfills responsibilities that we feel that we have, correct? Okay, thank you. Good.
Uh, street lighting. Don't laugh. I I got the work orders in last week.
No.
I've got confirmation from EverSource that they are drawing up the work orders as we speak. They want a couple of definitions on on the length of of the poles that the lights will be on. And what the wattage is, but I've got confirmation that it's. It's in the pot and cooking and it's gonna get done and done momentarily.
Well, Santa must have gotten on their case.
I did. I I was very good this year. Well, kind of. But so we're making headway on that. Item K, American Rescue Plan Reminder of our public hearing. It's coming up on Monday, December nineteenth at six thirty. I think by then, by the, our meeting that we're gonna have after that, there's probably a couple of other other items that we're gonna wanna visit. One of them is I'll have an up. Um one of them is I'll have an update for you in two weeks on where we are on funding. That we put in for the fuel assistance. It might, last time we checked with with Melissa, we had already expended a third of or a quarter of what we had allotted. Excuse me, a third of what we had allotted uh the additional ARPA funding, so I'm. We'll take a look at that, we may, we may have to go for more.
Uh I think that there was something that came out, the state was also gonna be providing.
Well, there's legislation been proposed, as I understand, by Governor Lamont. Um and he's putting in, I. One person told me ten, another told me twelve million dollars more. Uh request to the uh feds for additional ARPA funding specific to that reason. So, uh but I have not heard any results of that yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna go on to new business. And Lynn, thank you very much for sitting there patiently. Lynn Lieber is with us, Lieber, excuse me. And from our meetings a couple of weeks ago. Lynn and I met and uh we're reviewing some of the work that Kara had done, but Lynn has also done some extensive work both on the um. New legislation that's been proposed to uh help with with our veterans and their uh tax bills. And also a couple of other things that Lynn and I'll let her address it as the things that our board can consider to enhance. Some of the, if we so choose to do so, some of the exemptions. Lynn, welcome, and I uh turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Here, you're fine.
Okay, great, so does everybody have the handout that I submitted today?
I do.
That came in the mail, the email?
Email.
Email. Okay, um should I start?
Sure, you can start, I don't have it yet.
Oh, okay.
I'm looking at it right now.
Okay, so what I did is I tried to put it in um order to first give you some statistics on the veterans that we have in Ashford. It's always a work in progress, cuz I'm adding during the year and then I'm taking out as people move or uh we get new veterans that come to town, but. At the point that I did these statistics, we had two hundred and six veterans who are receiving state mandated exemptions. And I further broke it down by whether they're a homeowner or whether they are not a homeowner. Because if they're a homeowner, we apply the exemption to their real estate. And if not, we apply it to their motor vehicle assessments. Sometimes the motor vehicle ones have a balance because there's not enough assessment in their vehicle for their full exemption. Uh then I broke it down by age, just to show you. You know, the ages of the two hundred and six veterans, we have over sixty percent that are seventy and over and the other forty are below. And I also did a breakdown of the veterans who have a VA disability rating. And that's all on the first page and wanted to point out for clarity that the VA disability rating is different. From a social security disability, which is a different exemption that the Assessor Office um maintains. So then if you go to page two. Sorry for all the detail, but I just wanted to um show you. Of the two hundred and six veterans, there's three different types of exemptions. We call them code A, code B, code C, because that's how they're um, the codes are assigned through the State of Connecticut OPM. The A benefits on page two, the top of it is um. Any veteran that's eligible to get exemptions. If they don't have a disability rating in the town of Ashford, they get a thousand dollar assessment exemption. And then if they've given me a disability rating slip from the VA, you can see based on their rating. Their assessment exemption increases up to anywhere from ten percent to a hundred percent rating, there's four tiers. And the last option is if any veteran has an exemption, I mean, a disability rating. Even if it's not a hundred percent, once they reach, reach the age of sixty-five, they automatically get the benefit of a hundred percent VA rating. Then I'm gonna jump down to, then we have B and C. They they either get A with B or they get A and C. If they income qualify based on the state income guidelines, we double the benefit that they get in A. So if they don't have a disability rating, they get a thousand dollar basic exemption. And if they don't income qualify, they get an additional two thousand assessment, so they would have a total of three thousand, no, I'm sorry. Five hundred down at the bottom. A category C, they could get a thousand and then they would get half of that, another five hundred, so they would get fifteen hundred. If that same veteran meets the state income guidelines. And that's by filling out an application in the assessor's office and providing their household's income documentation, which includes tax return. Social Security ten ninety-nine and any other non-tax, non-taxable type of income. If they income qualify, that same veteran would get the one thousand basic plus double another two thousand. So that that one veteran with no disability rating could either get a fifteen hundred total exemption or two thousand total exemption. And I tried to explain that at the bottom of the page. And then I also put what that assessment, what the equivalent is in tax dollars. We currently for the twenty-one grand list. We had a total of four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars uh assessment exemption. Which equaled a little over thirteen thousand in uh tax revenue loss. Um nine hundred of that was for the income-based exemptions, which I will get to on the next page. So on page three. Of the two hundred and six veterans that are getting exemptions, eleven of them qualify. For the additional benefit based on income. And out of that, seven of them are homeowners and four of them are not, so it's either applied to their real estate or their motor vehicle tax bill. And I just noted that the eleven that we have, they're all over the age of sixty-seven and I'll talk about that later. That has to do with, you know, when it comes to the income guidelines.
Lynn?
Yes.
When when we say additional exemption, we're talking about the latest legislation?
No, this is all state mandated, everything I'm talking about.
For existing, okay.
On page four is when I'll start to talk about the local.
Okay.
Every, everything so far is all state mandated, every town um has to offer these. Their exemptions might be slightly different and that has to do with revaluation, um which I I didn't include the detail of that, I'm just dealing with what the town of Ashford has.
Okay.
But every town has to give the state mandated exemptions. And if a veteran is income qualified, they get that additional benefit, which was the codes, the B codes. So to get the additional, the state mandated additional exemption based on income. They have to apply to the assessor's office between February first and October first every year. And again, they fill out an application and they provide the income documentation. Including a tax return if they do it, and if they're eligible, the application is good for two years. And then two years they'll come back and refile, if for some reason they had a major change in income, they're supposed to report it to the assessor's office. Um some, sometimes that happens with somebody ends up over income and they would have to come off and and go down to a C code, a non-income qualified exemption. And as of Grand List two thousand twenty-one, the state guidelines. Uh the maximum amount that a veteran could make is for unmarried is thirty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred. For a um a married couple, and this is their combined income. And I just wanna note that these state guidelines are also used for the homeowners program, which has to do with. Um elderly and totally disabled and also the renter rebate program, so these guidelines that the state puts out are for all three programs. There's something else too that I'll just mention quickly, we do have some veterans that have a hundred percent VA disability rating. And if they income qualify. I just look at the adjusted gross income, I can't look at social security or any other like um. Benefits that they might be getting from the VA, and so their guidelines are different, it's eighteen thousand for unmarried and twenty-one thousand for married. The next thing I want to mention um is that I found on the Connecticut Town Profile website. Because it's hard, I don't have any way of determining what the incomes are of our, all of our veterans unless they've come to. To show me their income to apply for one of these programs. The Connecticut Town Profile is saying that for two thousand twenty-one, the median household income for Ashford is seventy thousand nine fifty-two. I also wanna mention that all of these programs, um we do make them available to the public. We put them on, they're always on the website, uh I put them in the Citizen two to three times a year, depending on when the application period is. Um and annually, we join with um some other towns that are covered by the Chronicle and annually, we put an ad in there. About this exemption along with other programs. And of course, they can always, you know, call, email or visit, so we do, we do make it known that these programs are available. And I will say, I didn't put this in the documentation, but you know, over the years and Kara would probably experiences the same thing is that. You know, we do have veterans that come in and they find out that they're over income, so. You know, that does happen where somebody comes in, they inquire about it, but then they show their income and they happen to be over the limit. Over to page four is where I then talk about uh Bill, the new legislation that just passed. That's the bottom half of the page, but when we first talked about it in October and I looked at it. Um I felt it was important to mention another local option that has existed for several decades, and that's at the top half of the page. So here are two local options that the town could adopt. That would provide additional um exemptions to veterans based on their income. I'm first going, again, at the top, I'm going to do the one that has been around, it's twelve dash eighty-one F. And I use bullets to just give a summary of how that program works. If the town did have that local option. It's been modified over the years also, there's been a lot of changes to it, and I did attach the detail, I did attach that statute along with the new local option. But I wasn't gonna get into all the, all the um the verbiage in that, I just tried to highlight. How it works. So for twelve eighty-one F, the exemption can be from a thousand dollars up to twenty thousand. The household income can continue to be based on the state income guidelines. Or the town could set a higher threshold. For years, it was twenty-five thousand was the maximum that a town could have this exemption over the state guidelines. But in two thousand eighteen, I found out that they had removed that limit and the town could actually go higher. If they did have this exemption and chose to go higher than twenty-five thousand over the state guidelines. Uh a veteran could be a homeowner or or not homeowner, meaning it can be applied to their motor vehicle or their real estate. And the filing period is exactly the same as the state mandated additional veterans exemption, it's February first to October first every year. And we are already the eleven veterans that we have that are already receiving the additional benefit based on income. If you did do this, no matter whether you stuck with the state guidelines or increased the the limit. They would be eligible, if they're already eligible for the current exemption, they would also be eligible for whatever exemption uh the town had here. I wanted to note too that this exemption, actually both of these, they're not reimbursed by the State of Connecticut. The only one that is reimbursed is the state mandated additional benefit based on income. And I.
Lynn, is is there any uh statistic that would show us on towns of comparable size? Or close to us in the state and 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 if in fact they've increased their amounts?
Okay, so I, the next paragraph, um I'll just give you a little more detail than what I wrote in the next paragraph.
Okay.
So so about four years ago, OPM did a survey. And they did ask assessors to respond and they had. All the local options that were available. And they asked the towns to say whether they, their town had that option, so I looked at that spreadsheet. And I don't have it at my fingertips right now, I didn't print it and bring it with me, but I determined there were either. Seventy or eighty-something towns that said that, yes, they did have this local option. But it doesn't give the details, did they use the state guidelines or did they increase the guidelines? Did they have a thousand dollar exemption or up to twenty thousand dollar exemption? So what I did do last week, Bill, is I looked at the, some of the local towns. And, oh hang on, I wrote some notes. So Columbia has this exemption. But they use the state guidelines, they don't, they didn't increase the guidelines for it, and they give another twenty thousand dollars in assessment exemption. Stafford, I, a lot of the stuff I found from their websites, looking at their ordinances and looking at the assessor page to get the information. Stafford has twenty-five thousand over the state limit and they give ten thousand. Uh there's another town and I didn't write it down that only gives a thousand dollar exemption. And I looked at Rocky Hill too, I wrote that one down. Uh but I didn't write if they increased the uh income guidelines, but they give a two thousand exemption. And I just happened to have worked for the town of Canterbury and the town of Brighton, so I was familiar with those. They increased the income by twenty-five thousand over the state limit and they each give a ten thousand dollar exemption. So what I determined is that the seventy or eighty-plus towns that said they have the exemption. I don't know all the details for each town, you know, how much they're giving and if they increase the. The state income limits. So that's what I have on the statute twelve dash eighty-one F, the new local option. Uh all I really know is, um I did a little research with what we had and what I read. When the question first came up. So the one thing I found with the new local option is that the assessment. Would, I'm I'm sorry, the exemption would be ten percent of the assessed value of the person's real estate. So I did a, an extract of our veterans' real estate records. And I just did a range, and so our current veterans that own a home, their assessments range between ninety thousand. And three hundred and thirty thousand. So if if the town would have this local option and any, there's a potential at ten percent of that ninety thousand to three hundred thousand. There's a potential that somebody could have a nine thousand assessment exemption, all the way up to a thirty-three thousand assessment exemption. The household income threshold is fifty thousand one hundred. Which is only three thousand seven hundred above the state income guidelines. And only veterans who own a home in Ashford would be able to apply for this, because it's very specific that it's for an assessment reduction on your real estate. The filing period is the same as the other local option and the same as the state, it's February first through October first. And it's, you know, every two years you have to reapply. I would have to calculate them manually, the system doesn't handle uh when you do ten, ten percent of an assessment. And instead of eleven of those veterans that I had mentioned on page two, seven of them, because they have real estate. They would also automatically get this benefit. Um, because they already qualify for the lower income guidelines. And again, this exemption, I just like to point out, is not reimbursed by OPM. So then if you go to the last page, I just put in the last few thoughts. Um. I don't know how many households would benefit, I only know the median household income. And I know that the eleven veterans that are currently meeting the guidelines. They're over the age of sixty-seven, which indicates, you know, reduced, potentially reduced um yearly income. And um. Any, I mean, the main thing is any thousand dollar assessment exemption that's given would be another thirty-two dollars. Thirty-two point two six five dollars based on the current mill rate, you know, that's being exempted. And this morning I got an email from OPM, every fall. They tell us what the income guidelines are for the following year. I didn't go back and change the document, I just put it on the last page. They did increase the benefits this year, it doesn't always happen, but this year they did, so instead of the um. Forty-six thousand four hundred, the new limit for married couple is now going to be forty-nine thousand one hundred. And for unmarried, it was thirty-eight thousand one hundred and now it's forty thousand three hundred.
Not a heck of a lot higher.
No.
No.
Some years it doesn't increase.
Mm-hmm.
So I didn't run any scenarios because, I mean, if, if, if you were to say five veterans, ten veterans for either one of these. You know, it's just a matter of doing the calculations based on the information I have here, times a mill rate to figure out what um, the total cost would be. And then didn't know if you needed further explanation on anything that I've given thus far or more detail on anything.
So Bill. And um, and Roger, if we were going to act on this. We would, for the veterans for next year, so to speak, we would have to do that at our December, our next December meeting. So it could go in the Ashford Citizen for January to notify the benef, the, these veterans that there are additional benefits available to them. Is that correct? Or does that make sense?
Can I, can I add something, Catherine?
Sure, and you, by the way, you did a very nice job with this and a very nice job explaining it.
Thank you. Um, one thing based on your question, Catherine, is. The filing period, period is February first to October first each year, but I do want to let you know if for some reason that. The board does want to pursue this. If it, if it happens be, beyond February first, the final, you know, if it's finalized. We could just let it known, be, you know, make it known and then they could start applying, it's not that. I just want to let you know that if it wasn't in place for February first. There's still plenty of time for a veteran to apply because they have a, quite a window for application period.
All right, thank you.
Well, Lynn, I, I'd just like to echo what, what Catherine said, I really appreciate, I know you did a lot of diligence on this. And I appreciate your presentation, it's very concise and clear. Um, there's quite a bit to uh digest there, um, I certainly think that our board. By our next meeting should probably consider whether or not we want to pursue um. You know, uh, increasing the exemptions and that. Roger, did you have any questions or?
Oh, no. No. Very thorough.
Anything else, Catherine?
No, that was good.
Lynn, we appreciate it very much. Um, does CCM or any of the, uh, the COGS put out any statistical information on this?
Well, it was OPM that took the initiative to do that survey for the local options, um. The veterans, if you go to um, I, I, I wanted to try to make this as concise as, as possible, but. The C double A O um website, the Connecticut Assessing Association on our website.
Yeah.
And I can send you the link to that, each of you or Bill, and then you can forward it. Um, in two thousand nineteen, they did extensive um. Analysis of veterans and the benefits that they're eligible for in the state of Connecticut, not just assessing wise, not just with property tax, but with many things. And there's four or five documents on the, our Connecticut Assessing website. That gives a lot of information about all the benefits that um. Um, veterans can receive, but to your specific question, Bill. I'll have to do some research, research, excuse me, because I feel that there is a website, there's something available, I believe, for veterans. To give them access to what towns, when it comes to property taxes, what towns offer.
That'd be interesting.
I'm gonna make a note of that, I'll have to um do some research in that, but I think there may be something for them. But the specifics about each town, okay, so that would answer the question if I could find that, um, so I'll get back to you on that one.
Okay. Well, very good, well, we thank you Lynn, we appreciate your patience on the waiting. On the agenda till we got to you, but thank you very much, I'm sure we'll be talking more about this.
You're welcome and, and that was fine, it was interesting getting uh caught up on what's going on.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome, have a good night.
You as well.
Thank you.
All right, item B, accept with regret the resignation of Art Tomich. Charter member and chairman of the uh agricultural commission.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor, any more discussion, I'd just like to say we uh reiterate that we do appreciate. Art's a long time uh standing on that commission and all the work that he's done over the years.
Absolutely, and he's been very easy to work with.
Absolutely. All in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you very much. Item C, board committee commissions appointments.
And we don't have anybody, right?
Yeah, I'm just going through a click, I don't see anybody here. Any tax refunds, Chris?
Yes, I have one. Um. To Honda Lease Trust refund for, per Connecticut General Statute twelve dash one twenty-nine. In the amount of two hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-three cents.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you, remarks for the good. Hearing none, item F, items for the next Board of Selectments meeting?
We had a few items that were tabled, so it's gonna be the minutes from uh. What is it, uh? Eleven first, twenty-one, twenty-two. I think we have Ashford School Tank, I'm sorry, Oil Tank Replacement Project Bits. And then there's the Status of the After-School Childcare Program. And I think it was to look again at what's um. The funding for fuel assistance.
Yes. We'll report that back. Um, I'm gonna guess, because this is time sensitive with getting this order in on this tank. Um.
Special meeting?
That we made very well, soon as I hear from the contractor and talk to Cindy a little more, call a special meeting so we can. Get authorization to sign a contract.
Okay.
I will entertain a motion at uh.
Wait, 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 I have one more thing.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, Transfer Station Committee.
Yes.
Uh, we need to make sure that we, we identified everybody who was going to be on the Transfer Station Committee some time ago. So it would be, um, what are we doing to move that forward?
I have not done anything in the past week other than wanting to get to it. Um, set up a meeting.
Can I make a comment about social services and ORPA funding?
Yes.
Since July. Of two thousand twenty-one, town meeting has appropriated sixty thousand. They appropriated twenty thousand. At the town meeting on November seventh. Twenty thousand at the town meeting on October twelfth. And you initially did twenty thousand without town meeting approval.
Mm-hmm.
Melissa keeps track of what she's paid out of that, she's paid three thousand. Six hundred and sixty-six dollars, which leaves her a balance of fifty-six thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. For fuel assistance or rental assistance or whatever.
So if I heard you correctly, what, of, of the sixty thousand, the only amount that's been truly spent is three thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars?
That's the spreadsheet that she gave us last week, two weeks ago.
Boy, I, I. I had the impression from that, from what I looked at, she had spent a lot more than that, but I guess that's good news.
Well, let's, actually, let's confirm that because here we are looking to, um, you know, put more money there and if she's only spent three thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars, it's. A bit concerning because we, you know, we're, we keep upping the amount, thinking that we're running short. So it just, just for us to get clarification on where she really stands, perhaps her spreadsheet was wrong.
So it's lucky we didn't put it on the agenda for the nineteen.
Yeah, that would have been awkward.
All right, folks, I've got uh eight twenty-four, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Thank you, folks, have a good evening.
Aye.
Aye, 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 aye.
Thank you, Mike.